Okay. We're going to call on public comments at this time. And you have exactly four minutes for your comments. Mr. Jeff Dean, you're first.
Mayor Council, my name is Jeff Dean. I am a resident of Salisbury, Maryland. I begin this way because the city's council rules of order adopted on April 28, 2014, require me to do so. The rules of order govern the conducting of regular council meetings and council work sessions. The city's rules of order spell out some specifics about how the president will conduct city meetings and defer to Robert's rules of orders for unaddressed issues. Robert's rules of order describes the role of the president as the officer that fulfills a leadership role by setting a specific tone for the organization. The president is therefore the officer that provides the people with a predictable and transparent government. The Maryland Open Meetings Act declares its primary goal to be to increase the public's faith in government, ensure the accountability of government to the public, and enhance the public's ability to participate effectively in our democracy. The Maryland Open Meetings Act requires that public business be conducted openly and publicly, and that the public be provided with adequate notice of the time and location of meetings of public bodies. Salisbury City Rules of Order, Section 8D states, "Work sessions are considered public meetings under the terms of the Open Meetings Law, and the public can attend. Members of the public or an interested party may have the right to address the council only on items under consideration in a work session. The council president shall control the discussion of the council and the public in accordance with the rules of order." On September 18, during a work session meeting, you, President Jackson, allowed a large group to speak at length on a topic that was not on the agenda for the proprietor of Homes for Hope. Excuse me. That was not on the agenda for the work session meeting. Allowing public comment on items not on the meeting agenda is in conflict with Salisbury's rules of order. By the language within those rules of order, it is also possibly a violation of the Maryland Open Meetings Act. Last week, on October 2, 2023, I attended the work session meeting and submitted a request to make a comment about you inappropriately allowing this group to speak at the previous work session meeting. Vice President Blake was presiding over that meeting and denied my request politely, professionally, because my comment was not germane to an agenda item. I asked to explain my rationale for my request; she denied me again. Vice President Blake did what she was supposed to do under the rules of order. You, President Jackson, the previous meeting, did not. This disparate treatment violates the Maryland Opens Meeting Act philosophy of increasing the public's faith in government, ensuring the accountability of government to the public, and enhancing the public's ability to participate effectively in our democracy. You gave one group, on one side of the conversation, with high stakes, a public platform that you did not give to anyone else wishing to react to their claims or positions. President Jackson, I would now like to remind you of your personal conduct at the last regular council meeting, in which you allowed a large number of speakers to take the podium without identifying if they were or were not residents of the city of Salisbury. Most were not. This is a violation of the city's rules of order. You also allowed these presenters to say slanderous things about residents of the city, also a violation of your rules of order. Also in violation of the rules of order, you responded to those public comments by going on a long and passive speech from your president's chair about how the spirit was moving through you, causing you to believe that one of the proprietors of the group is a good soul with a good heart who only wants to save lives. The job of the president of a government body is an important one. The president ensures meetings are run fairly and according to the laws governing their conduct. The president is the breaker of tie votes, and while you are unable to speak on topics, you also bear a responsibility to maintain some vestige of neutrality so that all ports and all parties in a dispute feel they have a fair chance of being heard. President Jackson, based on your multiple violations of the rules of the order in short time that you have presented as president, I ask you to either recommit yourself to your rules of order or step down from your presidency. Thank you.
Randy Taylor, 403 Camden Avenue. I really came up tonight, am I getting four minutes or? Four. Four minutes, okay. Give me a 30-second heads up, okay? Don't shut me down. Was, talk about this parking garage issue, which I think we made a motion for a vote tonight. You know, I never really got a formal response on the cash flow that I put together was issue one for me. A couple weeks ago, it's been about a month or so ago now, I put together a cash flow. Apparently, this garage is going to lose $400,000,000, which is a significant amount of money, and I've got no formal response from the city. And then on tonight, I'm finding out that we're moving forward and giving a contract, or at least awarding a construction management agreement to move forward on that project. I think, and I want to keep my comment short, I just would rather, I would prefer if we would take a step back on moving forward with this project until we get a sufficient parking study that will, I think, satisfy the rest of us in the Central Business District, that we're going to be sufficiently covered with regard to parking. I mean, reasonable people can disagree, but we can't, we can't, I don't think, give up all our surface parking, and even though I know that there's been some versions of what I think Andy's put together for alternate, get comfortable with what the replacement is. And I think it's just a basic, so what I'd like to ask you, in the light of what's going on with this parking garage now, we're talking about awarding this construction management agreement, which I know is a satisfaction of the agreement with the disposition agreement, I would ask, for a host of reasons, because we haven't gotten a parking study, we haven't gotten an environmental impact study, we haven't really done a formal cash flow as a municipality on this parking garage, which I have proven that doesn't make money. In fact, it loses $400,000. We're not talking about $4,000 or $40,000, we're talking about $400,000 with no response from the city. And again, I'm not trying to be Don Quixote over this, I'm just saying, this is real, this is meaningful, this is real taxpayer money. So if we're going to be transparent, and we're going to be forthright, I at least would like a formal response that tells me that you guys have thought forwardly enough on this topic, that you can give me a counterargument that I'm not wrong, number one. And number two, that you've made at least an attempt to do a rudimentary parking study, even if it's not done by the developer, or a form, that you've made an account for what we need, meaning the Central Business District, needs for parking in and out, day to day, for our businesses that are already down there, not forgetting about this parking, I mean, this apartment complex. I think it's very, I think it's important to note that there's a couple of businesses that I'm aware of that are closing as a result of just Unity Square. Forget about the next step, okay? It's real. I think this has the potential to be the worst thing that's happened to the downtown. As much as it's been sold as the greatest thing, it has got, it has to be, it could be potentially the worst thing. It's a disaster from a development perspective. So that's all I wanted to say, and I wish you would take the time amongst yourselves to debate this, but give us more time to think this project through. I know President Jackson, she's voted against it from the beginning, I would like to think that a couple of you, again, not taking a fight, I'm just saying, this is real, we've been down here for 25 years, and I see it as a big threat, very big threat. So I thank you for those comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Carolyn Wagneth.
Good evening, my name is Carolyn Wagneth. I was surprised and outraged to see on the agenda for this evening, and I found this out Friday afternoon, that there was a sole source award of bid ITV 24102 Town Center Parking Garage for $10,750,000 to Gillis Gilkerson. It's outrageous. There's been no attempt to advertise this contract on your procurement portal. I've checked, and the bid number does not appear, but there is a bid, a similar type of bid, not the exact same thing, but ITV 23120 Parking Garage Rehabilitation Phase Two that was listed, along with a 214-page document and a 93-page addendum. It generated a great deal of interest. 18 bidders were listed on that portal. So it begs the question, why would you not bid a $10 million contract when there's potentially great interest among bidders? And why this out-of-the-blue, just dropped out of the sky on Friday, sole source bid to the Town Center, when the Town Center lots have not been sold, nor has the proposed developer of the Town Center Apartments received approval for their project? In fact, your own city planner, Brian Soper, and the developer's attorney, Michael Sullivan, gave erroneous information, in other words, they lied, to the Planning and Zoning Board when they sought preliminary approval, which is yet another outrage. I was at that meeting, I heard them state it. They told the P&amp;Z Board that they could not do anything, when in fact, the P&amp;Z Board has the authority to look at it and make a judgment and a recommendation. A written justification is required for any sole source award contract valued greater than $2,000. This is a $10 million contract. It represents 5,000 times that $2,000 figure. That's outrageous, that your first line would be, oh, let's go give this a sole source award. This is a cost of work plus fee award, in which the public has denied access to a critical document, Exhibit E, the Construction Management Agreement, or CRM. The document that coincidentally was noted as missing from the Land Disposition Agreement during public comment on June 20, 2023. Council members illegally discussed that LDA in a closed session and voted to approve Resolution 3263. Exhibit E was also the subject of another closed session on July 17, 2023. And here we are today, the CRM, the missing Exhibit E is still not publicly available. How can you make a decision? But hey, why not just rush through this project that the council, the acting mayor, the city administrator, and the developer want, but which adamantly is opposed by many taxpayers? And why not do it in a highly unusual manner? Just sneak it in an agenda a couple days before the meeting and hope that no one notices? Well, it was noticed, and it was noticed because there is no transparency with this council. We're not seeing everything. You say you're seeing everything, you're not either. The election's less than a month away, and citizens and taxpayers are paying attention and will widely publicize an outrageous action such as the sole source of a $10 million contract. Thank you.
Mr. John Wagneth.
City financing a parking garage should be halted for a wide range of reasons. First of which, we have the wrong type of contract. Cost plus fee is very risky to the city, especially using estimated construction costs that are not verified by a normal bond bid process or otherwise. Furthermore, sole sourcing requires fixed-price contracting based on actual costs, not estimated costs, and require a full summation of all the costs of the prime and all the subcontractor's actual costs. These are many costs, materials, fabrication, et cetera, and they should be based on verifiable subcontractor proposals which don't exist, and may not for quite a while. Not a weak statement in the contract that the prime will negotiate with subcontractors to obtain the sub's estimated cost. Estimated costs don't mean a thing in cost plus. The city has to pay all costs, and these are actual costs of the prime and all the actual costs of the subs. These costs have yet to be determined, and may not be for quite a while, but yet, we're going to try to push this through as fast as we can. Worse than the above, we have a contract clause that says the prime can raise the maximum contract cost whenever his cost approaches the maximum, and this is for the duration of the contract. So basically, when he starts to run out of money, a month or two into the project, when we have big holes in the ground, he's going to come to the city and say, I need more money. What is your choice going to be? It's probably going to be try to bond more cost funding for it. This is not a reasonable way for the city to rush into this type of cost contract without time for a normal process of careful determination and analysis of the real actual cost and the subcontractor's cost. These costs are going to be highly subject to be raised. We have a cost for an estimated cost, which is advertised at a certain amount, but there's no documentation how that came about. Under conditions of a cost plus, the city would have to pay all the costs, for all the cost growth, no matter what they are, through the entire contract. It's illogical to have this kind of haste and waste and risk the city's financial well-being just to put something in place. We could have a financial disaster in the city with bond rating collapse, debt service defaults, destruction of the city's financial base. As an example, just using a low-ball estimate for the principal cost of the garage and a modest interest rate, the bonding cost results in the city having a huge cost obligation over that period of $20 million. When we borrow money, we have to pay a huge amount of interest on that. So as warned before, this is a huge black hole for the city without any real tax revenues from the developer. For 10 years, we get almost nothing, 10%. Another decade, we get almost 40%, and that doesn't amount to anything to help, there is no return to the capital of the city, there's no return of the city's cost. It could mean absolute ruin of the city's financial status, our debt service capacity, and it could be a total financial decline that wipes out all our city cash reserves and our financial reserves. It's ridiculous that this isn't halted and reexamined to a better way of contracting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nancy Rosen.
Hello, my name is Nancy Royson, and I reside on Beaver Bamm Drive in Salisbury, Maryland. I'm a retired construction project manager for Arlington County, Virginia, where my job duties included advising the county real estate section on property acquisitions as relates to possible environmental concerns. I also oversaw many environmental cleanup projects and large building renovations. One project was overseeing the major soil and groundwater remediation at the county's 40-acre Equipment Division and Trade Center, which morphed into a 15-plus-year EPA and state-monitored cleanup, costing millions, and resulting in the property being declared suitable only for industrial purposes. When I heard of the plans for downtown, I suspected there might be some contaminants under the parking lots. Based on the historic sandborne maps, a number of typical town businesses, including a paint shop, had been there in the late 1800s. Just recently, in a radio interview, a NAB Center historian told us that a car dealership was there. In the 1960s, the city tore down and paved over the abandoned businesses and created the current parking lots. Then I learned in the recent council agenda about Proposed Ordinance Number 2834 to authorize funds for Lot 5 compliance project. It states that contamination was not discovered until after the FY24 budget process, and not until the lot was proposed for sale, was an environmental assessment done, which revealed the problem, which for starters is costing the city $89,000 in the first year of a more detailed investigation and remediation mandated by MDE. Additional funding and FY25 may be required, and likely for years after that. So this leads back to a big concern with sale of property for the Salisbury Town Center. At minimum likely, there is some contamination from abandoned underground heating fuel storage tanks for each building, and there might be a full-blown groundwater and soil contamination by petroleum products like benzene, MTVE, et cetera, from the car dealership that was there. And that car dealerships typically include vehicle repair facilities with hydraulic lift pits, fueling stations, and the like, such as what I had to help remediate at the Arlington County Trade Center. The old paint shop could be a source of lead and solvents. These could add up to a serious financial burden on the city as owner, seller of these properties. So I beg question, my timer just went off, so I beg the question, has due diligence in the form of an environmental assessment been performed by both parties for the downtown property sale? Already, we know the developer's lender is concerned with flooding and requiring the site to be raised 2 and 1/2 feet. And if so, what has the buyer discovered in their environmental assessment? Has this information and associated costs been provided to the city? And even more important, has the city conducted an environmental audit and shared our findings? If this is not done in the proposed sale of lots or Salisbury Town Center proceeds, along with the sole source for our garage construction, it risks putting the city leaders, the bond investors, and taxpayers in a real big, complicated financial and legal bind. How and where in the proposed agreement will such costs and time delays be shared? I hereby assert and advise that this is a reasonable concern and must not be ignored. Until these matters are addressed, I urge city leaders to vote against the award of bid ITV 24102.
Ms. Rosen, your time is up.
And I also urge the city to revise the Town Center Parking and Associated Agreement due to this and the many other concerns that are plaguing the success of improving the downtown area.
Your time is up. Please, thank you. Monica Brooks.
Good evening.
Hi.
My name's Monica Brooks, I live in Salisbury. But I'm also here as president of Comical County NAACP. We have, on numerous occasions, talked about ensuring that our city is inclusive in our diversity of our bidding in the process of those who are allowed to do projects in the downtown area. We have seen in a lot of the projects of the last five years, a handful of the same people's names doing these projects, and I think it's very important, even if Gillis does this project, I think it's very important that we show the residents of this city that there's care and concern and transparency in the entire process. And I had just, I just saw this on the agenda a few days ago, but it's, it's just concerning. I don't know that such a project, I mean, I'm in construction, I don't want to do that project. I'm not saying to do that, I don't have the capacity to do that space, but I know that a number of people are. I saw on the paperwork here that this started when the justification for the sole source started back in 2015, and then 20, was it 2015, and then it went up to 2021, and then the last thing mentioned was 2022. So I was trying to figure out what happened between February 2022 and this space where we are for this sole source. And I don't know, when you're talking about the $750,000 that the developer would do, that 10,000, I mean, sorry, $10,750,000 that was mentioned, that 750,000, I still, I know that question was asked, I still don't fully understand how that part became what was pulled out of the pie. And if that entire number was given in the bid process from the developer, then they said, you know what, we'll cover the 750. That's what it looks like to me. And then the city was like, ooh, you guys are going to give us 750? Awesome. That helps us. That's what it looks like to me, because there's not been real clear information given in this whole thing. Yes. So that's what I wanted to say on this sole source thing. Full transparency, because I'm into full transparency, I found out that we were asked to contribute a bid on this project from Gillis, and I guess we might, we might have submitted a bid. I didn't know anything about the sole source portion of it, but that just shows, I'm just letting you know what's important to me, and what's important, what was brought up to by many of the people in our organization, in our group, about this. Lastly, I just want to say, I look forward to hearing what comes out of that transportation, good Lord, the feasibility study, because as you know, it is a tremendous need. So many of our residents are still walking in harm's way, they don't have adequate transportation, and that transportation is not, what we currently have is not serving the community equitably in any way, shape, or form. That's long overdue. I'd rather get some doggone, I'd rather us get some transportation before we get this parking lot.
Thank you. Ms. Lynn Bratton.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for designating this as a pink event in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I encourage everybody, I won't take your, I won't say give blood, but I will say, please, if you know someone who is eligible and it's time appropriate, make sure they get their mammogram. I'm a two-time cancer survivor, the last time being just five weeks ago, and it was caught solely with a mammogram on a routine basis, so please encourage, it's life-saving. Now, back to business. I am absolutely appalled that a $10,750,000 bid would be given out with a sole source sourcing. Listening carefully tonight to Ms. Jennifer Miller, I heard her say it was her decision, and that if it was not passed tonight, it would then go out to bid, and that's what should have happened tonight. She said blatantly and clearly it was her decision. She gave you justifications, I get that, it was all in writing, I get that, but she still said it was at her discretion that that was the way this went, and that if you didn't pass it tonight, then it would go out to open bid. And I thought, hallelujah, there's the opening, and that's what should have happened. Diversity, equities, transparencies, just getting your costs down in writing in black and white so you know what you're signing off on and not a blank check, just means you need to get open-source bidding for anything over, anywhere close to that amount of money, not to mention we have an election coming in November early, and there will be absolutely a new mayor. Thank you, Mr. Heath, for your service, but we know you're not running, so there would be another mayor at the helm, and whomever that person might be will be then left with the administration and the follow-through on these projects. My other question is another one, and I'll try to keep, my yellow light's not flashing yet. I'm trying to go back in my memory base, and I'm not coming up with it, how much we actually are selling Lot 5 for? As a result of that sale, we now have to spend over $89,000 plus on our remediation project. And once those openings start happening, more and more is going to be found, I guarantee it, based on some of the things Ms. Nancy just mentioned to us. So if, if we're not getting very much money to So if we're not getting very much money to start with, and now we're going to have to pay a whole lot of money to fix it up, somehow that doesn't seem to be balancing our budgets either, and maybe they would be better off if we just left them as paved pieces of land where cars could park, because that is a safe way of protecting other people from whatever those contaminants might be in that particular area instead of opening them up for housing or recreational activities. So thank you very much. Have a good evening, and the light didn't even go off.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Robert Taylor?
I'm Robert Taylor, a 51-year resident of the city. I was 31 at the time when I located here. During most of the period, I've been fairly happy and proud to be a Salisbury resident. The last several months, three, four months, I'm becoming less happy and less proud, almost embarrassed, because of the city government. And let me say, to be clear about it, it's not the police. They do a fine job. They deserve the raise they got this year. It's not the fire department. It's not the general city employees. It's the elected officials. This is our problem, and we've seen it tonight with this sole source designation. We all know that the reason for this is that there's a contingency in the land disposition agreement, that there has to be a signed construction management agreement before that goes to closing. Now, by designating Gillis Gilkerson as the sole source, that removes the public bidding process, so that delay is now gone. They could sign that contract, that could be signed very soon, and by that I mean before the election, and that's what is going on here. We all know it. This has been -- this downtown development project, Salisbury Town Center, has been the biggest scam by a local government on its public citizenry that I've seen in my 51 years of living here and practicing law around the Lower Eastern Shore and many other locales besides Salisbury. It is really a sad situation. Now, I'm not going to be leaving. As I said, it's 51 years ago, I'm now 2 years old. Don't think I'll be selling my home and going somewhere else. I might, if I knew back in '71, '72 what I now know, I might have gone somewhere else, but that's prologue, and that's over. But I can tell you this, between now and Election Day, I'm going to be doing my darndest to get rid of this council with maybe one exception. Thank you.
Okay, we now have administration and council comments, so Mayor Andy?
Yeah, just one quick comment. Mr. Taylor did mention about a follow-up for the parking. I can get that to him and to the rest of the council to help people understand. I know it's an outstanding item from the agenda, so I think I will defer the rest of my time to Mayor Heath.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate it. First, as always, if you're able to donate blood, please do so. This is Fire Protection Week, and as most people know, one of our good friends lost his house this past week, and I'm asking for prayers for him and his family, and also for the family of the young man that was fatally injured in the crash. It's a shame. It's an absolute shame, and I hope we keep them in their prayers. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Okay, Angela?
I just wanted to just to know that this past weekend has been very rough on the community. We've had some youth that have passed away, serious injuries, house fire, a multitude of other things, and just, you know, be very grateful in reducing them life and pray and uplift others.
Okay, Megan?
Just echoing Mayor Heath's sentiments about the Berkman family. I know personally myself, I will be looking to find ways to help support them. I know that Salisbury University has really rallied behind him and his family, and I encourage you all to reach out as well. So thankfully, no one was fatally hurt, aside from a few treasured family pets, but just keep them in your thoughts and prayers as they work to, you know, rebuild their lives. I wanted to put a community forum on everyone's agenda. Our delegate, Cherie Sample Hughes, will actually be done at the MAC Center, doing a prescription drug affordability forum at the MAC Center October 11 at 11:00 a.m. If anyone is interested, please come out. It's a good opportunity for you to connect with your state delegate.
First of all, I just want to wish everybody Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day. Secondly, over the weekend was the Pride Crosswalk repainting, a little bit of joy in otherwise kind of rough weekend. It looks beautiful. They always do an amazing job. The volunteers that come out are just some of the nicest people contributing to the community. And just lastly, I wanted to congratulate Chief Minchin, and I'm really excited to have him leading our police department.
Okay. My turn. DeShawn? I almost forgot you were down there.
I definitely didn't forget, so I want to say thank you to the public for one of their comments and the emails that they have sent, and this was not an easy decision to make, especially me, this being my second week on council, and, you know, a lot of these things have been decided on and in the works before my tenure here. And I did spend a lot of my day today. I am -- I do work, but a lot of my -- all of my free time today, on calls, reading materials, and just understanding the decision that I had to make today. So I thank Ms. Miller for explaining that thoroughly, and I did not make any decision I made today lightly, and made sure that I was making a decision that she could make, given the city code, and that we had to make on council. So I'll just leave the public with that, that again, when you are on this side, you are making an informed decision for everyone. I do want to say also, no one mentioned it, but our neighboring universities across the bay, Morgan State and Bowie State, both had tragedies at their homecoming events. A lot of my friends were there and were definitely seeking counsel, because they -- it was a tragic situation for people to be injured and passed away from those events. And I called Chief Minchin and told him that, listen, this is happening across the bay. We need to be aware of this for our very own homecomings coming on, on the eastern shore. So he assured me that he is speaking with the chief of police at SU to make sure that they are on high alert. Again, my thoughts are with the Delmar High School students and the entire city. I do want to mention, I know Ms. Bratton mentioned earlier, but yeah, we are wearing pink today, definitely underscoring that, but I am wearing pink in memory of my great aunt, who I love very dearly, Teresa Jordan Arrington. She was a great soul, and cancer should not have taken her away from us. She was a two-time survivor, but she did not make it a third time. Some community things going on this Friday at Altitude Trampoline Park. There's a trunk retreat, and also I believe the Good Beer Festival is just happening this Saturday at Pemberton Park.
Okay, thank you all. This evening or today, I started my first tutoring session, and it was -- it's remarkable. We had more kids than I could even imagine us having, and it is so good to be able to assist young people and help them educate, and we have SU students who are helping us, and I'm working on getting some students from UMES to assist in this endeavor. And it transpired when I went to Kellin's Vine, and Michelle was with me, and one of the young men, 11-years-old, could not read or write. 11-years-old, going to the sixth grade, and that's painful. It's very painful to see our kids in this situation. So when I saw it, I got overwhelmed, and one of the other mothers, parents came out, and she took him to the side and worked with him. And tonight, he was there, and I spoke to him because he was kind of frustrated, but I explained to him, this was being done for him, you know? It's being done for you. I don't want you to grow up and get a job, and you can't even, you know, read or write or, you know, even explain or look at something if they give you something written. You can't conceive it. You can't even process it, because you don't know how to express yourself through words, or you don't know how to express yourself, even reading. So he calmed down. He really calmed down. He calmed down a lot, and it did my heart good to see, you know, just knowing that you care, you know? I mean, that was something good for me, but not only good for me, it was great for the kids, and I was really surprised at how many parents brought their children out. So I'm working on it. It's Mondays and Tuesdays at the VFW 10159, and it's from 5:00 to 7:00. And if you know anybody that needs help, those SU students are remarkable. They're very good, and I watched them work with kids before I even came here this evening. And Tuesday, we will be remanding and doing the same thing. I have also a trunk and treat that will be taking place on October 31 at the VFW, and we're going to, like, block the roads off, the streets off for about two hours, and we have some treats for the kids, and we just want to make things safe for kids, because just as DeShawn was saying, it's bad out here, and we don't know when someone will take the initiative to even try to do something to our kids innocently, you know? So we have to protect our kids, and that's what I want to do, and that's what I want us all to do, protect our children, because they're innocent in everything. Also, I think October 19 at Shipewa, the Indian Village Playground. What time is it, Monica?
4:30 to 6:30.
4:30 to 6:30. I thought I had it right, but I just didn't want to make a mistake and say the wrong time. 4:30 to 6:30. Come on out and join us. It's just a festivity of fellowshipping and getting together and having a great old time with the community. It's an investment. We have to invest in where we live. We have to, because if we don't invest, who is going to invest? And we have to make sure our children see us and know who we are at all times. So your presence will be greatly appreciated if you just come out, if there's nothing but 10 to 15 minutes just to see what we're doing. Make your presence known. I thank you. Okay, so we are now back in open session, and the reason for the closed session was to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. It was for interview, candidate for deputy city administrator. 7:55, and we are now adjourned.